Your own counsel and those in the audience are welcome to reflect with us. Thank you. I'm going to ask to stand, I'm going to ask Councilman Harry Collins if he will return to plead his allegiance.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to take a second and thank Vice Mayor Showalter for so aptly filling in for me at the last council meeting. I had a chance to review it. Pretty good job. Real good job, as a matter of fact. Yeah, thank you very much. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? Very good. Under public hearings, the amendment to the 2013 Comprehensive Plan to designate four urban development areas within the town of Christiansburg, and we have a staff report from Sarah Morgan out of the Engineering Department. This is Sarah.
All right, it looks like it's starting to show up. Thank you all for having me. I'm just going to go over-
Adam, morning delights. Andrew Zuma. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm just going to go over a brief overview of what we've been working on with the urban development grants and how that has led to our amendment tonight. So first, we're going to talk about how we got here, the value of the grants and the amendment process, the four UDAs that have been identified, as well as the Comprehensive Plan Amendment itself. So first, how we got here. The grant was awarded to us through the Office of Intermodal Planning and Investment, and it was a $65,000 technical assistance grant that allowed us to work with Michael Baker International and Renaissance Planning Group. You may remember Sashin and Vlad, they were the two representatives from those two groups. The Planning Commission has already had its public hearing and recommended approval of this amendment, and we are now in the process of doing the same for you all. So there's two values that we see and the importance of them are the household to transportation funding through the VDOT. This will allow us to strengthen our applications moving forward for transportation funding for the town and make us a little bit more competitive when we go up against other localities. The other is the reassurance that we have enough land in Christiansburg to accommodate the commercial and residential growth that we are projected to get in the next years. So this is the future land use map with the boundaries overlaying on it, and this would be the amendment that we would move forward with if it is adopted. I'm going to go through each of the four boundaries and go into a little bit more detail of their locations. The first is the smallest UDA. It's the Cambria UDA, and it is basically the downtown Cambria historic area, and it expands a little bit more, but there's only two different future land use designations within this one, which is unique because the other ones are quite diverse. The next is our downtown UDA, and it expands beyond the downtown designation for our future land use map. Goes a little bit more north towards Kroger, if you will, and then a little bit more into our residential areas around downtown. And this was due to the underutilized area that was identified within the grant process.
May I ask that the road there on the right side that extends out horizontally where the commercials built up on left and right side, what street is that? I just can't see. That's Run Oak Street. Okay. Yes, may I get by. Thank you.
The next is the Institute UDA, and this has a little bit more of a unique name. Planning Commission was deciding on what to call it. It does encompass the Christiansburg Institute property, and they decided to go with that and to kind of tie it to a historic aspect of the town. It also includes our Public Works property, our high school, as well as the REC Center, and then the main commercial areas along North Franklin. The last one is our largest one. It's the Mall UDA. As the name suggests, it has the mall within it, as well as our big box area of our commercial growth, as well as a little bit of a mix of all different designations that we have for our future land use map. Now, for the amendment, like I said before, the future land use map would be amended to include those boundaries, but there also is one of these text changes. The main one is Chapter Eight, which is our Community and Economic Development Chapter, and that's going to house the urban development text and will include the goals and strategies that are in each of our chapters within the Comprehensive Plan. The next two are utilities and transportation that will be adjusted. That's Chapter Five for Infrastructure Services. That's going to be able to prioritize the improvements to utilities within the urban development areas. And the last one is for the supporting a potential transit center within the Mall UDA. So those are the amendment changes, and I'd be happy to take any questions if you'll have.
What's the transit center in the mall area?
There was discussion about having a kind of multimodal location within the town, and one of the ideas from the consultant in Planning Commission discussed it with them of having it at the mall because there's currently Blacksburg Transit going there, and that that will be a good location to get different commuters in from Blacksburg and the county and Radford, and it would be a good central location to house that kind of transportation.
I believe Pulaski comes over also, don't they?
I believe so.
Pulaski area Transit. I think they did.
Sarah, what percentage of our land is commercial versus residential? I put you on the spot. Any heavens?
I don't have that much information. We did do a full analysis of what is underutilized and naked properties within town, so I do have that information off the top of my head, but it was a process of going through. The consultants did an analysis with mathematical problems and assessment of the land and the building value, and then we went as staff through some of the locations. They would pick up small little cemeteries that they, you know, the computer told us that was underutilized, but as staff knowledge, we kind of went through and got those out of our system.
Thank you. Here are questions. Was the proposed rail station sites, did they consider those?
They were informed about that. The two locations would be in the Institute UDA, and I believe we do talk to that, but since it wasn't finalized and through this process, they were informed that it was happening, and then we kind of informed them along the way of the discussions that we were having, but I, we didn't put anything concrete.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Sarah, thank you very much. We appreciate it. The next portion of our agenda is our consent agenda. Under that, the minutes of the meeting of October the 25th and the scheduled public hearing date of November 22nd, 2016, conveyance of a .069 acre portion of Stone Street to Kroger Limited Partnership One.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you.
I second.
A motion and a second. Any discussions, questions? Hearing now, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
B six oh, thank you. This is a, that's a portion of is our Citizens' Comments section where we invite citizens to come forward and make known any questions, concerns, or problems that they may have. I'd ask that you get either, you can stand where you are, or you can come to the podium, give us your name and address, address your comments to the chair, and you have five minutes. Is there anyone here that would like to participate in Citizens' Comments? Seeing none, I close that, the Citizens' Comments portion. There are no introductions and presentations tonight. Is that correct, Mr. Biggs?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. I'm going to have to loaf for an hour and a half more. I should respect me home. Old business, we have an ordinance vacating a .69 acre portion of Stone Street adjoining tax parcel 496-27-4555, North Franklin Street Northeast, related to Kroger Grocery Store expansion. The public hearing was held October the 25th, 2016.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that the ordinance vacating the 69, .069 acre portion of Stone Street, as noted in our agenda, we approve that vacation.
I would second.
A motion and a second. Any comments, questions, discussions?
Think last time, if I remember correctly, the town, we didn't have any issue whatsoever with that request and going forward on that, so.
It works fine for us.
Absolutely.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That would be six eight, thank you. Next is an ordinance vacating a public utility easement to tax parcel 496-27-4555, North Franklin Street Northeast, related to the Kroger Grocery Store expansion. The public hearing was held October 25th, 2016.
Make a motion that we vacate the public utility easement as explained to us at the last meeting, related to the Kroger Grocery Store expansion. It's basically just moving the public utility easements from where they are now to provide room for the footprint, and they're giving us new easements where the green is there.
I'll second. Motion and second. Any questions, comments? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
The carry six oh. Next is the appointment of Recreation Advisory Commission, and I'm going to hand that off to Councilman Court Hall, who is our liaison to the Recreation Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would also ask our Recreation Director, Brad Appleby, to stand and recognize him. We've had a round of interviews, actually two sets of interviews, and I'm proud to say that we had excellent applicants, excellent candidates that were vetted, and there's been a unanimous request by the Recreation Commission to approve these three members to be full-fledged members of our Recreation Commission going forward. In addition, I'm extremely happy to say that we've got our two student representatives here. You've heard me talk about them before, Ms. DiOia and Mr. Davidson. I'm thrilled with both of them. Again, I don't want to steal any Brad's thunder, but they also are here as well. So at this point, I'll turn it over to our Recreation Director, Mr. Appleby.
Thank you, Councilman Hall. Well, first of all, I want to thank all the applicants and everybody that has put their time in for the Recreation Advisory Commission leading up to this, and so we're thrilled to be able to be here today before you all. So I'm going to introduce each of them. I'm going to start with our student representatives. Nicole DiOia, if you wouldn't mind just standing, please. Nicole's a student. She is a junior at Christiansburg High School. Nicole plays soccer as well as volleyball for Christiansburg High School and is involved in a lot of different things as well. Matthew Davidson, Matthew is a sophomore at Christiansburg High School, and he currently plays lacrosse and plays it pretty much year-round, is also involved with a lot of different things. The great part about being a junior and a sophomore is we get to keep him around for a while. The other part is, is with, the great thing is, is when Ms. DiOia graduates, we'll still have Mr. Davidson for a year so we can have another student representative come in and have a little bit of experience there. So we're very thankful to have both of these individuals here. Next, I'd like to introduce our three other commission members that we would like to bring before you, and that is Richard Polikoff. Richard hasn't been in town for a long period of time, but he's sort of moved around. He works at Virginia Tech. He also does some writing with the Run of Times and has been very involved with a lot of different aspects. So he's bringing something new to our commission, so we're really excited about that. Next is John Neal. Many of you know John Neal. John has been involved within our department in many different ways, whether it be with the Huckleberry Trail, whether it be with the property along Truman Wilson, as well as coaching within our program for softball and volleyball as well. Next is Robin Boyd. Robin has been in the town here for close to 10 years, has been involved. He's coached basketball for our youth program as well as softball. He currently is an assistant coach at Christiansburg High School in the softball program. One of the, one of his favorite things to do as a family is to go out on the Huckleberry Trail and take a part of our recreational amenities. So these are our five members that we'd like to bring before you all with your blessing to be a part of our Recreation Department and Recreation Commission so that they sort of help us move forward in the recreation world for Christiansburg.
And with that being said, Mr. Mayor, and with everybody being present, and that's been certainly something we've requested to have happen, I would make a motion at this point that we approve new Recreation Members John Neal, Richard Polikoff, and Robin Boyd, in addition to approving Ms. DiOia and Ms. Davidson as our student representatives for this year and going forward.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
One thing I want to mention about Mr. Davidson and Ms. DiOia, which I'm really excited about, is that I think we had talked as a commission a couple of months back, and we're going to be asking them, we want them to get very involved, but we're going to be asking them to give us kind of a report from Christiansburg High School, from the outlooks of the students, about what kind of amenities that they're looking for, maybe what we're lacking as a community, and that's an area that we don't have any involvement indirectly. And I have a daughter that's in high school, but as far as getting them to talk is another matter, sometimes somewhat difficult. So we're really looking forward to having, to see what those students can bring forward to us so we can be more well-rounded and not meet every demographic within the community, not just simply those of the adults on up. So I'm very, being very appreciative, very proud, and very happy about that going forward.
If they can help us get the Huckleberry Trail through the high school.
There, I would, I'm not. That's right.
Very good, very good.
This is a current issue.
I would say that if the rest of you are as, going to be as helpful as John Neal and do as much for the town of Christiansburg as he has in the past year, we have got an excellent team that's coming in because John is just goes beyond and his daughter has beaten my granddad and son in soccer many a time, you know, and is still smiling.
Very good. Well, we're back on schedule with the legislative meeting now.
You want any comments from the rest of us?
No, 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 no. That's my call.
I would just like to say welcome to you all. I'm excited to have a little bit more influence from soccer and lacrosse, which those, in my opinion, are two sports that we'd like through our community programs. It's usually brought to us by private organizations, and I'd like to have some of that influence in there, but I am looking forward to it. And as you all know, or if you're aware of, we lean heavily on the Recreation Commission for advice and guidance in certain areas. So I'm looking forward to your tenure on that commission, and thank you for being part of it. I appreciate all of you doing it.
Mr. Collins, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. You folks are awesome. When I was younger, I used to coach for a lot of years, and I coached all my kids in all the sports, and that's what it's all about, the kids and our kids, and making sure they do the right thing, and sports is a great way to make sure they do the right thing. Thank you all very much.
Same. Mr. Bishop?
Sounds good. If you get voted in, welcome.
And I appreciate, I appreciate your willingness to serve. We are, as a former member of the REC Advisory Commission, I know the amount of work that goes out, and we're going to challenge and test all five of you during your terms. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That would be six oh. Congratulations to all of you.
And thank you all for being here.
Okay. Item D, Discussion of New River Valley Regional Water Authority's proposed capital improvements and financing alternatives. Mr. Biggs?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we brought this back for you from our August 31st special joint meeting that we held on this topic over at the end of Virginia Tech, where at that time, both engineering and financial consultants presented the picture of the necessary capital improvements at our water treatment plant. What we found is that the, much of the plant itself is very antiquated, and as such, we are at risk of possible loss of short-term water supply due to many failures in the systems, those systems being pumping systems, clarifier systems, electronic systems, conveyance systems, really, top to bottom, there's need for attention at the plant. The plant itself is looking at about $20 million in necessary improvements. The raw water intake at the river is about another seven and a half million. As we know, cells are projected to be relatively flat. We're seeing some growth, but we're also seeing efficiency in the use of water. So even though we're seeing customer base added as people build new houses and replace old plumbing, it's much more efficient. So our water cells are going to be relatively flat over the next 10 years or so. Right now, we've got about $390,000 in debt service at the plant. Of course, it's not our plant. We're a member of the authority, so we're kind of aggregating when I say "our," meaning our membership organization. But that could increase to as much as $2.5 million a year by 2020 and over $3 million by 2024.
That's 390 per year, Mr. Biggs, right now, debt service?
Yes, sir, currently, right, which is just a pittance of debt service for an organization like that. So we were presented with some numbers having to do with our rates. What we found is that for the typical residential customer, rates about 2820 per month, which is pretty much middle of the pack for Virginia. The average for Virginia is $32.03. Of course, the high is as much as $78 per month. And then if you further screen down to water retailers who are members of authority, we find that only one jurisdiction that was identified in the study, Lexington, was lower. Seven were higher. So our current rate structure is relatively modest. Nobody likes to pay more for anything that they purchase than they absolutely have to, but what we're looking at in the context of the treatment plant are capital improvements that are absolutely essential to a safe and reliable water supply. I think that the engineers did a very good job of presenting their case in that context. We do have some things that are working on this front, and so this item was included for this evening as a discussion item. Certainly is nothing that prevents you from reviewing and acting on the item if you would see fit, but we do have a November the 16th audience with our chamber. We want the business community to be well-engaged and aware of this matter going forward, and so the authority will be making a presentation to the Chamber Board on the 16th, and so that is a pending item. We also had some financing alternatives that were presented by Davenport, the financial advisors, that had different alternatives with regards to when the debt service would be taken on. They referred to their two recommended or two proposed alternatives, what they called a project split and project upfront. In simple terms, what it did is that the project split would involve three separate bond issues for the total amount, and then the project upfront would aggregate more of the financing in the 2017 time context. There are some advantages to both. Obviously, if we take on more debt sooner, then it's going to have an impact on rates sooner. So if you look at your project upfront alternative where there's two financings, one in 2017, this is included with your agenda packet, and the other in 2022, we have a sooner, steeper increase in rates, but then it flattens out. With the project split, we'd have three financings, one in 2017, one in 2018, and one in 2022. So the advantages and disadvantages are fairly simple. If we have more than two bond issues, then we have more transaction cost because with each bond issue, there is transaction cost that is involved, soft costs associated with the selling of the bonds. And the other advantage to what they would call their project upfront is that we have a reduced risk. We know the environment that we're operating in right now. The environment that we're operating in is historically low interest rates, and the longer we push out our debt acquisition, the more risk that there is that interest rates would increase.
Steve, do they factor in, when we had talked about this with them over at Blacksburg, the, I agree that the transaction costs, the soft costs will be certainly less if we do, certainly these things that get upfront like that, but do they factor in the effect of it having a bond rating and doing this in multiple tiers to where the next time with the second or third bond to come out, we've already got this previous amount that's already been allocated and already been borrowed against, is that, which could have an adverse effect on the borrowing, which could, of course, have an adverse effect on the interest rate applied? Do they factor that in, or was that looked upon?
My interpretation, I don't know that they addressed that directly, but my interpretation of where they went with that is that because the aggregate amount of debt that we're going to be looking at is essentially the same, it's probably not going to have a significant impact.
Okay.
Now, the other side of that is, as time goes on, if, for instance, our sales increase at a faster rate due to growth occurring at a faster rate than what we projected, then we would have more of a customer base. That could have, you know, a minor positive impact on our overall bond rating because they would see that we would have a better position for repayment. But there again, I think because of the principal amounts that we're talking about really not changing over time, that's a very subtle change.
Sir? To say, if I'm mistaken, I'll be the first one to admit it, and I got to admit, when these numbers came out, it hit me like a two-by-four in the forehead, and especially since we entered into the jointure in good faith, and I think some of us were taken back, but I'll speak for myself. I was mistaken until we got complete information about what all these numbers meant. But simply put, and I want to say this on the record, it was very enlightening. The presentation was outstanding in that what we're looking at is not, has, I won't say nothing, but very, very little to do with jointure, and actually more to do with getting behind on our regular maintenance of this facility. Instead of a 20-year cycle for maintenance, we're looking at almost a 40-year cycle, and so we're playing catch-up on getting our house in order. So with all that being said, I have reviewed the material here, and I'll go ahead. I don't think, for this myself, I think Scenario Three is where we need to head, where we just have gradual increases all the way across rather than spikes at years 2019. You're going to have a 43% spike then. It's quite simple to me, or I would propose that we move ahead with Scenario Three, which is a gradual approach each year, looking at the raw water costs going up 9%, somewhere between 3.5% and 9% per year rather than these spikes, the 38% and 43% spikes. I think that's, anyway, that's what I want to say.
And Brad, to echo that as well, I think Henry and I both had a chance to go to the site with Mr. Biggs. It's been a couple of months, maybe a month and a half ago, and it was, use the word enlightening. That's the perfect example, a perfect word to use to describe what came out of that. The Director Caleb took us around, and we saw from one port to the end, and it's an amazing feat in and of itself, but it's also in great need, or I almost would say, I guess I would say it's really dire need, not just refurbishment, but just really an overhaul. There's a lot of the antiquated things there. It's a lot of old equipment, and some of it was even described as being so outdated that some of the engineers, they don't even make those parts anymore, so they have engineers there that were there on site for many, many years, just so they can work on those particular idea, those particular items. And the reality being, though, that most important thing is to make sure we have water, which we don't want anything to interrupt the water supply and water flow. And so these things are being requested, frankly, from the top, and so in from the engineers, those individuals in the best position to evaluate the necessity, and it is very, very necessary for us to go forward. Brad, I've also reviewed them, and I was one of those that wanted to look at, see if we couldn't have the big jumps and see if that would be more impaltable to people, but I think that overall, in the way I look at a, you know, very fiscally conservative-type budget, which is the way I like to look at things, I think that you need to have that gradual, allows people to plan better, and so I would be certainly in line with what Mr. Stipes has stated. I think that's easier for families to deal with, more of a gradual increase, although we're talking some pretty big increases. I say gradual, we're not talking pennies here. It's pretty significant, and I feel like you got to, you got to put it all out there first and foremost, but that does seem to be the most, again, economically, if you will, feasible for families to really get behind.
And businesses.
I would agree. You're exactly right.
I think we have to be very cognizant here of interest rates. I think everybody knows they're going to go up in December, and I think in 2017, we're going to see interest rates go up two or three times to the way that the Fed is talking now, and I think that is something we need to always keep in consideration here of these, you know, interest rates as they go up, and we like to catch them maybe as low as we can. My question is here, on the November 16th, what time is the meeting and where is it going to be?
The meeting time will either be at three or four o'clock, hasn't been finalized, and the location hasn't been finalized. Just looking for a space that would be large enough to accommodate the group who will be attending, so I confirm that up, I confirm that up with you the first of the week.
That'd be great. If you email me or call me or whatever, I'd like to go.
And also keep in mind, you know, this is a, we're a member of this overall organization. What they're seeking from us is an endorsement to go forward, but ultimately, the board of directors of the authority will be the group that decides exactly what is done in terms of both the capital investment and the financing plan. We have a representative, and your action is instruction to our representative, and certainly is informative to the group as a whole about our position, but the But the ultimate final decision in terms of how the debt would be administered would be based on the action of that board.
I'd also like to say, since we are being recorded, last comment on the matter, is that this is, there is no plan B for a safe water supply for our citizens. This is it. And we have to protect that. And we have to make sure, ensure that we have a reliable water supply. And in the words of Sherwood Wilson, who chairs the board and is pretty non, he wasn't, I mean, he's put it very simply and said, "It's not a matter of if we do this, it's how we do this." Because there is no plan B for water. This is it. And that's why I think, you know, it's of the highest importance.
You know, the economic development impact of a loss of water supply would adversely impact on our ability to recruit new businesses for years. If we were faced with a situation because of a plant shutdown, where our restaurants had to shut down, our hotels had to shut down, our schools had to shut down, businesses just would not consider this area for investment, knowing that there was that risk. And so, you know, when you think about it in the context of the economy and how dependent the economy is on water. Certainly, we all depend on water as a safe and reliable utility for daily living. But the economy runs on water. And so that's really, you know, something that we have to consider as well.
I think we just also need to mention, just in brief, that it's, this is not an engineering failure. This is simply equipment that had a lifespan that we greatly exceeded that. And why we greatly exceeded that is because of the strength of the individual employees there at the Water Authority. We're very blessed. We have an incredible water supply. We have very clean water in this area, at least I feel that way. And I think it's been tried and true. But again, the keeping it that way is keeping the flow appropriate. It's obviously our first priority. And then building redundancy thereafter, which is what we're also looking to do so that we have contingency plans in the case of some type of failure. So again, I would agree with Brad, not to be a dead horse, as Mike likes to say, but it's not a matter of if. It's not a fun thing to have to do. This is a large, large item, a large item to be a part of. But it is incredibly necessary going forward.
What do you need from us?
Well, if you'd like to take action this evening, we would need action authorizing our board representative to go forward with the necessary capital improvements and express our preference in terms of financing plan.
And this preference, again, is nothing more than a preference. It's still going to have to be voted on by the four members of the authority, correct?
Yes, sir.
So we may have a preference for three. And that doesn't mean that's going to be the preference accepted.
That's correct.
And to make a point to everybody here, it's not just Christiansburg. It's Blacksburg, the county, Christiansburg, the whole, all of Blacks, yeah.
I'll make a motion that we support the capital improvements as presented to us at the work session previously and in our agenda packet. And I'll also add to that motion a preference for Davenport scenario three for financing, yes.
I would second that motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
One thing, Mr. Mayor. The scenario three for all members of the public and everybody that might be watching this and want to look at this, this could be found in our agenda packet. Is that page?
That's page...
Seventy?
Hold on for one second.
It's 54 on the Water Authority-Davenport portion, but on our agenda packet. Does anybody go?
Page 61.
61? And all I've got is a Davenport number. But that way, in case anybody wants to look at that and see those numbers, they're right there for you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anything else? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Shawalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's 6A, thank you. Mr. Biggs, you have our pleasure. Mr. Nelson, as the board member, you know what we have discussed? Thank you. New business. Is there any new business to come forth, Council, tonight?
Not from us.
Okey-dokey. Committee reports?
None.
None, okay. Mostly fattening us up for that two-day retreat. Staff reports? Town manager?
All right, speaking of which, do you want to remind everyone that our retreat begins tomorrow, 9:00 a.m. at the Holiday Inn?
They will feed us early, too, or?
We will have lunch. There'll be snacks and drinks for, you know, the course of the day, just to help carry us through. We're going to be pretty busy. I'm not sure we're going to have a lot of time for snacks and drinks. But there will be lunch as well on-site just to save time. And the mayor wanted me to emphasize that it is a casual format. So you can wear your sneaks or whatever, sweatpants, whatever, you know, makes you casual and comfortable. Second thing, I want to give you a follow-up report on the citizen comments on Starlight. Councilman Hall did submit some questions to us and follow-up to that. And so putting together kind of a little inquiry. Actually, Mr. Wingfield is conducting that on our behalf just to bring a little better historical perspective to the situation. We will bring that back to you as a report we would expect at your next meeting. That's our goal.
Thank you, Mr. Biggs.
And also, current events, current operations. We do, right now, have a scene on 460 East where we're working LP gas tanker that has overturned. So if you're on the bypass eastbound, right there, at the North Franklin exit, there, as of the beginning of this meeting, was an overturned LP gas tanker that is going to require offloading. There was no fire involved.
Mr. Biggs, concerning the Starlight, the owner, we're trying to keep in touch with her and trying to keep her up on what we're trying to do and what's going on.
Since the night of that meeting, we have not reached out to her, but we'll be glad to.
I think that would be good. It seemed like she was, well, she should be, you know. This is her business, this is her life. And I think it's just good for us to keep her abreast of what we're trying to do and that we are trying to do something.
Good point. That's all the report I have.
Town attorney?
No.
Nothing going on? Other staff? Randy? This is on local foods and local places program.
Of course, we received the local foods, local places grant launched this earlier this year. And that's basically a partnership from USDA, Environmental Protection Agency, Department of Transportation, Appalachian Regional Commission, and the Delta Regional Authority, gradually, and the Appalachian Regional Commission not within the Delta Regional Authority area. And it's just a partnership from those agencies. The program's aim is to provide technical and financial assistance to help communities integrate local food strategies into their economic development efforts. Christiansburg is one of 20 southern communities nationwide that they selected for the program in 2016. And earlier last month, we had a community input workshop, and we completed visioning with the consultants. That was Renzo's group on Friday. We've developed, or working on developing a draft action plan, which will detail steps to basically promote the farmers market in the downtown area. Once the action plans are approved, the town will receive a $20,000 grant towards initiating some of the action items. And just to take you through some of the drawings that were prepared for the workshop, this was kind of one of the preliminary drawings that Vlad Gravich did. He's from Renzo's group. Of course, he worked with the urban development areas also. It's kind of existing downtown structure. And this is just a schematic of Hickok Street at current. These are a few drawings of potential loadings for the farmers market with the red squares being basically tenant spaces and the triangles being vehicle parking. Right now, we're currently using the double-loaded setup. Some of the program needs that were determined to be needed, public areas, vendor spaces, loading, spacing for events, demonstrations, some type of indoor storage and restrooms. This is basically current setup downtown, potential, you know, entrance tent and also potential for a demonstration-type tent or musical setup. But those, of course, would be temporary setups. A few, I guess, kind of more involved details for downtown Hickok. You've got a single pavilion, which is a large permanent structure, cantilevered out over Hickok Street with potentially a tent area at the rear and also posed a potential gateway for Hickok Street. Just to kind of announce you're at the farmers market. We were thinking maybe something like Christiansburg Farmers Market across the arch. If you notice also, we would be, need to utilize some of the Presbyterian Church property. Bill Aldrich is actually at the church tonight talking to them about that potential. Also, if you notice, we would have a, the town boards are considering potentially redeveloping their property. And if they did, we would ask that they consider potentially notching their building or maybe categorizing their building just to kind of open up visibility in Hickok Street because that was kind of seen as a major concern at the farmers market, visibility coming from the east. Another drawing we have is a dual pavilion setup. This would involve a large permanent structure over, basically the entrance way to Hickok Street, and then another potential covered structure at the rear for music space, anything like that. Under both of these options, Hickok Street could remain open. You just have to have pass-through under both of those. But that is considered as a potential leading open under both. Few of preliminary, a couple of preliminary concepts. This basically just shows a cantilevered structure, tents, and another potential stage area. And basically just a cantilevered structure. Potentially, we've talked about purchasing the building at the back and maybe relocating a new building on the property. Of course, that would be up to Presbyterian Church if we were going to do that. I don't think we'd want to go a combination route. But if the church was willing to partner with us, cooperate, of course, we'd compensate them or rebuild the building. And this is just a basically streetscape view of a cantilevered structure out over Hickok Street, with vendor setup. And this is the Alcor building. It actually does have a notch there. I know you can't see it from basically the street view, but that's indicated on the building. It is a part of the program, just to note, too, all of these drawings are on the town webpage now. If you just go in and type "local foods, local places," you'll find a link to it. The action plan that was in the council packet, it's just a draft appendix A for the action plan. It lays out goals and potential methods to get there. One of the first goals is to build. And the first item under that is design a future market that meets the needs of customers, vendors, and downtown businesses. Present the initial design to counsel along with feedback from residents, vendors, and property owners. And we did show the initial design concepts to the farmers market vendors last week, meeting Thursday night. Consider a feasibility study for Hickok Street public space and market concept and research grant funding opportunities. Prepare a preliminary design for Hickok Street public space and market space and secure funding for construction. Second action plan item goal is to market. Conduct citizen survey to gather insight what non-customers would like to see at the market and what it would take to attract them. Design and order temporary directional signs to guide people to the market from North Franklin and Main and add market to eventual wayfinding signage. And Melissa Powell is basically evaluating our wayfinding signage program. Get an affiliate venue for the Crooked Road Music Trail in downtown Christiansburg and participate in the Junior Appalachian Musicians Program. And of course, that's under consideration from the Ignite Group. Expand the role of the market manager to increase visibility of the market through promotion at existing events such as Wilderness Trail Days, the Heritage Festival, and Food Truck rodeos. Basically, just help get the word out. Next action item is to operate and organize a meeting with vendors over the winter to debrief what worked well and what might work better in 2017. Like I say, we did have a vendor meeting last Thursday. Consider combining the special events and farmers market management into a single position or program with one and a half equivalent full-time staff. Increase awareness and grow the customer base of the farmers market by using marketing tools such as direct mail, water bill employers, and social media. Find out what the other 16 farmers markets in the region require in regards to farmers market liability insurance. We do require a $1 million policy. And that's been mentioned a few times from prospective vendors as potential stumbling block. From what I've heard, the insurance costs about $300 to $400 a year. And we have decided to stay with it, at least for the time being. But we would potentially survey, see if maybe we want to go a different direction. And the next action item, incentivize. Create a plan to seek funding for a facade improvement program for downtown. Develop a conceptual plan to connect downtown to the Huckleberry Trail. Study feasibility of incentives the town could provide for downtown development and redevelopment, including a service district to fund enhanced services, a tourism development zone, and/or property tax abatement to encourage improvements. Next steps, complete and adopt the action plan. Of course, that will come back to town council eventually. Determine most appropriate action items for use of the $20,000 grant. Then proceed with the action items. It will take a couple of years to complete the action plan items and years to implement all the conceptual plans, like getting the Huckleberry Trail to downtown. Any questions?
With your options, did you guys work up any cost?
No, not really. I can give you a rough idea, though. I think you're probably looking, probably even in those options, roughly a half million dollars, just kind of top-of-my-head type figure.
You're teasing the whole.
We're doing total street redesign. We're talking, there are probably about 20-foot property acquisition from Presbyterian Church. Again, we want them to cooperate with that. So, and potential street redesign, too. And I don't know if you noticed, but there's a vent in the street here under this option. Just kind of slow traffic down a little bit.
Are we still monitoring the USDA with the possibility of federal grants? USDA grants to see when those cycle around?
Yes, we are. And also, if you notice, in the action plan items in the appendix, there are potential funding sources mentioned for all of these.
What was the response from the vendor?
I think it was pretty positive. You know, I think they all basically expressed that they're committed to trying to be here. And I think they were pretty happy with, you know, beginning of year six sales. It did take off at the end of the year. That's a little bit of a concern, just trying to get people to stay down throughout the market season. A few things we talked about, maybe more events, things like that. Maybe recruitment of targeted vendors also, something else we mentioned.
And that was mentioned to them, the Crooked Road possibly, and having other, you know, events down there at the same time?
Yes.
I think this is fantastic first step. And it's sort of some of the things that visualize about what the farmers market could be. But on a bigger picture, such exciting things like Ignite occupying the old Baptist church, our interest in maybe attracting a microbrewery or two. But setting the tone for what's going to, what downtown is going to look like, you know, we should be a leader with that and setting the tone for what, you know, what's, you know, what's going to happen down there. We're setting the pace for that. And I think, given this, you know, serious attention and doing, and Mr. Biggs, I think part of his attraction to me, when he interviewed with us, was his experience with such things in Clayton. And, you know, reinvigorate, everyone wants to reinvigorate their downtown. But we've got so much that we can, you know, take advantage of. So, but some of the bigger picture things with Ignite and trying to get some cultural and microbrewery and these type of things downtown, this is, this is, this is a big step towards that.
It makes the downtown more of a destination.
It's placemaking, yeah.
It is. And yes, again, any kind of infusion like this, an upgrade, it's going to have, frankly, a lid of effect in the surrounding areas, surrounding real property, its own product.
Yeah, even in Blacksburg with the farmers market there, even when they're not having a farmers market, you see people hanging out there, eating lunch, you know, you know. So that's more than just a farmers market.
But this is separate from our RFP that we have going out, or is currently out for the downtown?
Master plan.
The master plan?
This is separate, yes.
I see that you, farmers markets will be opened up for the Christmas parade.
Yes.
Have you had, have you talked to vendors or many people?
We've had pretty good interest. I think we'll probably be full again this year.
Was that 15?
Yes, sir. I have 49. Yes, sir, I have 49 applications, 84 applications. Last year I had 53, and we've got five food trucks coming instead of three.
Wow, that's great.
So space is our constraint, not the want of wanting to be there. We've got vendors coming from three states this year.
And you know, another point I would like to bring out, the museum, Montgomery Museum is planning on having several activities, cruising, things like that, next spring, and maybe we could do a tie-in, you know, with some of the activities, maybe you might want to get with Super R and find out, tell her what's on your mind, too, and maybe that would be a good way to join forces.
One thing I will point out, you know, potentially outgrowing Hickok Street was a little bit of a concern, still is to some degree, but we do feel that if you were to build a structure like this downtown, it could still be used for basically a community gathering space, music events, things like that.
And Hickok Street, last thing I'll say, Hickok Street is not critical to our transportation network.
Yes.
I mean, whatever we want to do with that, to invigorate the downtown and set the pace for that, I think we should, you know, keep it up to mind for that.
It carries about 1,200 or 1,300 vehicles a day, but it's basically cut-through traffic, and there's other cut-throughs.
Right.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Randy, thank you.
Good presentation. That was nice.
Council reports, let's start with Mr. Collins.
Yes, sir. A few weeks ago, or it's been a little while longer, and I asked the town to look at the driveway entrance into the Public Works Department, because I drove it one day and all this grudge come out of my car, and it gets fraying realigned. Anyway, the town, it's paved now. I was over there last week and it's paved, and I appreciate the action, and Public Works, I'm sure, appreciates it a bunch.
If you didn't drive a 56 Nash Ram, the bolts wouldn't come out.
Did you see me?
Yeah. And I think, I talked to Ricky about that, I think that was, I think that was a budgeted item for this year anyway, but it didn't hurt to bring it back to your attention, thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Bishop?
I don't have a time.
Mr. Hall?
It's 7:52. And I have, I have nothing to report, Steve.
Move on as quickly as you can. Mr. Stipes?
Nothing. Nothing.
I quit. I tell you, I think a lot of you saw the card there at the Aquatic Center this weekend, and it was a three-day meet, and they had over 800 kids there from the ages of eight day teens, and so the people staying there Friday night, Saturday night. And they tell me that in December, there's going to be a larger meet for kids, over 1,000 kids, which is about all in the amount for a beat, and if you get a chance to go down there, it's something how they run this thing. That's all I got.
Mike, can you just read this, man?
I wasn't quitting, Steve, I was just saving up the next time.
Everything I need is right here on the sheet.
Okay, that's fine.
I make a motion request for a closed meeting under...
Also, I don't have a comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't have a comment.
Do you have anything? Can you tell us about Mexico?
I used, I will say this, and for the students in the audience, forgive me, but I used quite frequently the two Hispanic words I know, taco and tequila, so I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
In that order?
No, I don't know what time of morning it was.
I make a motion request for a closed meeting under Virginia Code, Section 2.2-371185, for discussion concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. The closed meeting is being held to consider incentives for proposed economic development investment.
I'll second the motion.
Motion second. Any comments? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
We're going to take a brief recess before we go into closed session, that will give us a chance to speak with and congratulate our advisory commission, Rec Advisory Commission appointees, and other various and sundry items.
Certified that the town council of the town and customer meeting closed meeting. In the best of each member's knowledge, discuss only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law, and only such matters as are identified in the resolution to enter into closed meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, your call is...
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hall?
Aye.
Councilman Huppert?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
6A, we have taken no formal action on that closed session item. Anything else to come before council?
Maybe just a quick statement for tomorrow, Mr. Biggs, we are meeting at 9:00 o'clock in the morning.
We'll be rolling at 9:00. We have a tight agenda, and the tightest part of the agenda is the morning session of the first day. Everything else kind of happens, you know, like timed. But tomorrow morning is free-flowing, so I don't know how much time we'll need. It will completely depend on...
So we should be there by 8:00.
Well, we need, we need to be in place and ready to roll.
Sure, we'd be ready to roll at 9:00 to 5:00, Wednesday, Thursday.
Actually, according to Mr. Biggs, if you come in five minutes before the meeting, you're late, so to say.
Actually, four minutes is late, five is on time. I'd be happy to say.
Very good, I'll see you all.
Very good, and Steve, you'll go over the ground rules with us tomorrow?
We will. We will, there's simple ground rules.
I look forward to it.
Turn on your listening skills, all right?